Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and time is now seven o'clock P. M. I will call, I welcome everybody to the meeting of the Havert Grace Mayor and City Council. I will begin with a roll call of the council members. Council President Glenn? Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Zinner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ringsager? Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Thank you very much. All council members are accounted for. I'd like to move over to the Pledge of Allegiance and the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This evening's opening prayer is submitted by Pastor Lynn Humphries-Russ of Susquehanna, charge of the United Methodist Church. It will be read this evening by the council president. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called tonight to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time in the contentious of today, that we are not only leaders but servants, and it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them, no matter where we live, everyone is a neighbor, our sister and brother, and throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind and spirit, and the strangers in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us all, with these men and women who are leading our community, the wisdom encouraged to know and do what is right and good and true. May we all speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. May we all be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray, in the name of all we hold sacred and holy, and all that we hold in good and right and true. We know you by many names. I pray the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Council President. Okay, we're going to move to item five on this meeting's agenda, which will be the approval of the council meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Councilmember Zinner made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Ringsager. Questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Council meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, carry six zero in affirmative. Councilmember Boyer, were you here at the last meeting?
No, I was not.
Okay.
I watched it online.
Okay, watched it online. Mrs. Sack, should Councilmember Boyer be voting on these minutes if she wasn't present?
There's a practice that you don't vote on them if you have to.
All right, don't worry about them. I'll let it go. Just procedurally, that's all. Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Sack. We're going to go to item number six, comments from citizens on agenda items. Mr. Seipolt, do we have received any comments from citizens that are on the agenda items?
No, Mayor, we have not received any this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seipolt. Council, do you have any comments or questions on on item number six? Done. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go to item number seven, appointments this evening. Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board, Councilmember Boyer.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint James W. Walker to another term on the Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is for the reappointment of Mr. James Walker to the Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Questions or comments on Mr. Walker? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The reappointment of Mr. Walker to the Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board carries six zero in affirmative. Item B, a wage and benefit commission appointment, Mr. Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Fred Wills, Jr. for the Wage and Benefits Commission.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsager, seconded by Council President Glenn. This is for the reappointment of Mr. Fred Wills, Jr. to the Wage and Benefits Commission. Questions or comments on Mr. Wills? Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Wills, I always tell him that, I remember the old adage, if you're the smartest person in the room, you're in the wrong room. And I tell him that as long as he's there, I know I'm in the right place, because he's probably one of the smartest people I've ever met in my life. He's really the heart and soul of the Wage and Benefits Commission, really does the yeoman's work on on the research and compiling the data, and he's been quite an asset to the city, and I couldn't recommend him higher.
I completely agree with your assessment, Councilmember Ringsager. Any other questions or comments on Mr. Wills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to reappoint Mr. Wills on the Wage and Benefits Commission, carried by the council, six zero in affirmative. Item number C, a Water and Sewer Commission appointment, Councilmember Martin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint James E. Clark to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
I have a motion by the council, by Councilmember Martin, seconded by the council president. This is for a first-time appointment to the Water and Sewer Commission for Mr. James Clark. Questions or comments on Mr. Clark? Councilmember Martin.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark is a prime example of a seventy-seven-year-old resident of Havert Grace who wants to become actively involved in the community. He's been in the military, he's been active in the youth sports programs here, he's selling real estate in Aberdeen, so he knows our area well. He'll be a great addition to the Water and Sewer Commission with his knowledge of the infrastructure.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Martin. Any other questions or comments on Mr. Clark? Okay, council, all those in favor of the appointment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The appointment of Mr. James Clark to the Water and Sewer Commission carries six zero in affirmative. Thank you very much, council. Mr. Clark actually served on our temporary commission a few years ago on the Titans Park Commission, did a very fine job, so good appointment, council. Okay, this evening, we're going to do an oath of office for two new police officers for the city of Havert Grace. These officers have just recently graduated from police academy and they are now currently employed and on patrol for the city of Havert Grace. I'm going to go down and swear these officers in, so, and I'm also going to have the chief say a couple of words about each officer. Council President Glenn? Councilmember Boyer? Well, thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We have two new officers that we'd like to welcome to the Havert Grace Police Department. We're very proud of these of these men. I had the privilege of meeting them before they went to the academy, and they assured me that they would pass, and they did, so we're very happy. So, anyway, but I want to I want to hand off to the chief, just to give a little more background on who these two new servants of the city of Havert Grace are for the general public, so when you bump into them, you can say hi.
Thank you, Mayor. The two new officers, the gentleman right here is Chris Close Savage. He actually comes from Cecil County, from Port Deposit, and we're very happy to have him in our city, because he also has a tie to our city. And the next gentleman right here is Alexis Matos. He comes from New Jersey. We're not going to hold you that against you, but, you know, but trust me, you will not want to go back to New Jersey after you've been here for a while. You really, really won't. It's a terrific community. I think you both are going to do a great job. Just to let you know, Mayor, and our citizens know, they actually started the Baltimore County Police Academy on July the sixth, and they just recently graduated. They, unfortunately, because of COVID, they did not have a formal graduation, but that they are hoping to have that in March in a much bigger facility in Baltimore County. So, they will actually hopefully have a good graduation, a formal graduation, when that does occur, so.
That's good news.
Yes, definitely, definitely. They're both, so far according to their field training officers, are doing very well, so we'll see.
That's very excellent news. I'm sorry, those of you lost the opportunity to have a word. Excellent. And, Captain, do you want to say anything? Chief said it all. Council President? Welcome to the team, put forward what you can. Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Boyer, who's the chair of the Safety Commission?
I just want to thank you for making this choice for a career. When you make a choice to serve a community, it's a choice that's bigger than yourselves. It's a choice that's going to be an honorable thing that you're going to live with for the rest of your lives, and very proud of you for making this choice to serve us. Thank you.
Now, most importantly, I let everybody else have a chance to talk. I would like to hand the microphone to each of you. Tell us just a little bit about yourself and why you want to be a police officer in Havert Grace.
So, my name's Alexis Matos. Again, I come from New Jersey. I was a correctional officer down there. I got my toes wet within law enforcement, thought that I wanted to do a little bit something more, so I saw Havert Grace was hiring, and they gave me the opportunity to come here, and I'm very thankful for that.
Hi, I'm Chris Close Savage. So, my parents own a shop downtown, and I've got to know a lot of the community and a lot of citizens here from that perspective. So, when the opportunity arose that I could become an officer with Havert Grace, I thought, what a better way to get to know the community and the citizens a little bit further than just the hey and have a good afternoon, more of the hey, I'm here to help and what can I do? And I took that opportunity. I'm really excited with what I've seen so far and the opportunities that I've had.
Thank you so much. Excellent words, everybody. I'll let you get to this, where? And chief? Or do we all swear together or one by one?
Do you mind one by one?
Absolutely. That would be my purpose, too.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
We're going to start with Chris, okay? Actually, I can hold it. I think I'll stand over here for you. Christopher? First of all, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say the word aye. When I say the word aye, you repeat the word aye, but also say your name, your full name, okay? Aye?
Aye, Chris Close Savage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement?
That I will fulfill the requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume?
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance?
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
State of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
Support the laws and constitution thereof?
And support the laws and constitution thereof.
That I will faithfully and partially?
That I will faithfully and partially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice?
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
A police officer for the city of Havert Grace?
A police officer.
My ability.
Best of my ability.
Good job. Excellent. Well done, sir. Officer Matos? Officer Matos, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I'm going to say the word aye. When I say the word aye, you repeat the word aye and say your full name, please. Aye?
Aye, Alexis Matos.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement?
That I will fulfill the requirement.
The office I'm about to assume?
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance?
Yeah.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
Support the laws and constitution thereof?
And support the laws and constitution thereof.
That I will be faithfully and partially?
Yeah.
Without fear of favor or prejudice?
Without fear of...
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Police officer for the city of Havert Grace?
Yeah.
Best of my abilities. All right. Christopher, would you like to walk over here real quick? I'll sign this for you. I think the chief wants to present something.
Yes, actually. If you don't mind?
Yes.
Actually, one of the things that we started to do a little while ago is, we, for every new police officer that comes to our department, we actually get you an engraved plaque of your oath of office, because this is something that you, this is near and dear to your heart. You absolutely have to follow your oath of office. So, Chris, I want to make sure that you have one, and also Alexis, and there is yours. Not a problem. So, hopefully, in twenty-five years, you'll be able to put that next to your shadow box for your retirement. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Christopher, come with me, and we'll take a picture. This goes to the city records, if you could sign that for me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Alexis? Goes into the city archives, if you could sign it right there. I just want to say real quick, I want to welcome you both to the finest people I know, honestly. Twelve years ago, before I became an elected official, you know, the Havert Grace Police have just been amazing reputation, and then being on this side of government and seeing how the sausage is made, it's even better than you can think. They're good men, good women, they have a high standard of excellence, and I commend you both for choosing our organization to begin your career, and hopefully, your whole, your full career, if it works out, I mean, you know, and, but what you're really going to find most amazing about the city of Havert Grace are the people you serve. Havert Graceans are unlike any other people you're ever going to run into, good people, law-abiding people. They have compassion, they're volunteers first, they roll their sleeves up and they get the job done, and they'll work, you'll find that the people will work with you and not against you. So, I want to welcome you to a great community, and I wish you both success and safety. So, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much. Any pictures that you guys wanted to get at all, or?
I got most of the video. You want to get something together, as together as you can get?
Thank you, Mayor.
How'd you enjoy your trip? Okay, we're going to move to number nine, recognitions. This evening, the city has no recognitions on its agenda. Item ten, proclamations, we have no proclamations either. And, most likely due to COVID-19, there's no presentations. And we'll go on to resolutions, and we have two resolutions on this evening's agenda. First resolution is a calendar resolution concerning license agreement at six eighteen Green Street, and I'll hand that off to Mr. Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to introduce calendar resolution concerning a license agreement at six eighteen Green Street.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsager, seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is a resolution on a license agreement at six eighteen Green Street. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce a resolution concerning a license agreement at six eighteen Green Street carries six zero in affirmative. A resolution by the mayor and city council of the city of Havert Grace, Maryland pursuant to sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland to authorize the mayor to enter into a license agreement for construction and replacement of a covered porch on the right way, on the right-of-way at six eighteen Green Street. Council, this is going to be resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two, and do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ringsager, seconded by Councilmember Martin for the adoption. Questions or comments on this resolution? Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council, as you stated, this is a, for a replacement of a covered porch on the city right-of-way at six eighteen Green Street. It's about a hundred yards from here, a nice home that they're doing some reconstruction on. They're going to tear down the porch and reconstruct a nicer newer, heavy-duty one. The lease agreement is standard boilerplate language as before, does include our fifty-dollar administrative fee, and the new schedule for payment, and the timeline that was agreed upon previously. I do have two friendly amendments to add for correction of grammar. If I could make a motion to introduce, to amend the lease agreement, page four, line ninety-nine, it says, "The porch shall extend no further into the right-of-way than the existing porch." That should be than. And subsequently, the same language on page eight, item one, "The porch shall extend no further into the right-of-way than the existing porch." And I make this as friendly amendments.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments before a roll call vote? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two. Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsager?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Council President Glenn?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero in affirmative, council resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two concerning license agreement at six eighteen Green Street is approved by this council. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringsager. Item B, calendar resolution concerning purchasing card accounts for city operations, and we're going to hand this off to the council president.
I think Jason's going to take it tonight.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No worries, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
I move to introduce a calendar resolution to authorize purchase card.
Okay, we have a council, we have a motion by Councilmember Robertson?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is a motion to introduce a resolution concerning purchase card accounts for city operations. Questions or comments on this introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce resolution concerning purchasing card accounts for city operations carries six zero in affirmative. Council, this is going to be resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havert Grace, Maryland pursuant to section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland to authorize the city to obtain Visa card accounts for the purpose of city operations. Council, do I have a motion to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Zinner, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments on the resolution? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, this is, PNC closed our local branch here. This will bring us back to having an institution that is Harford County. It's close to us, and they have local branches in the city serving our residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Thank you very much. Councilmember Boyer?
Just a quick question for clarification. All of the benefits we had with the past purchase card are still with the current, with the new purchase card, correct?
Correct.
Which allows us to have a savings accrued or through our purchases?
Yes. Actually, if council doesn't have any objections, I mean, I wanted, if council has any objections, we have been looking for a new bank since PNC closed down last year, and it's been a long vetting process. Would you have any objections for Mr. DeHordy, just to kind of clarify your question you just had?
I think it'd be great.
Okay, Mr. DeHordy, can you please tell the public the steps involved for us, for the city choosing a new bank, and answer Councilmember Boyer's question about the purchase card and things like that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, be happy to. This first started, as you noted, back in September of two thousand and nineteen, when PNC decided that they were going to close the local branch. We reached out to see what options were available to the city, and we first met with Harford Bank in January, or, excuse me, November of two thousand and nineteen, where we exchanged information, what programs they needed, the purchase card program being one of them, and what some of our major concerns were. The state requirement that the funds, our bank accounts be totally collateralized, things of size in order of magnitude were our biggest concern, obviously. At the, Harford Bank did not have a purchase card program, and we're actually one of their inaugural ones. TCM is a service provider for community banks for this kind of card. The card itself will have basically the same parameters and opportunities to grow it as they get comfortable with us. They have no history with us. But it should have the same, it has the same rebate opportunities. This was very important to us, along with the overall fee structure with Harford Bank, so that we weren't paying any more for the same services and the like. And Harford Bank has, I can say, has been very, very both forthcoming with their operations. They've done a lot of work. So far, they've done a lot more work than we have, but we're going to catch up now in the next six months. And this program, they actually developed after looking at our Visa Bank program and looking at our statements and our fees. And they worked out an agreement where basically we're getting the exact same program that we've always had, and it will replace the PNC purchase card program that we're currently using today. Just to give you some, for instance, is we've, this is, we just finished our fifth year. The first four years ranged rebates anywhere from thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to almost twenty-eight thousand dollars. We have not seen the twenty reimbursement. We usually get it at the end of this month, but I expect it to be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar range, much as we've been getting the last year. We should be seeing the same. We are at the risk of acceptability, but since it's a Visa, our expectations are we're not gonna run into issues as terms of acceptability by the merchants and the people that are currently allowing us to use the card. So we hope the program continues to grow, but since the beginning, our request to Hartford Bank was to make it seem, you know, make it seamless financially to us and operationally as much as possible. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Boyer.
One more question, just for the legit, but why is it logistically important to have a local bank?
Well, from a broader economic perspective, a local bank helps all the businesses in the city, and so we wanna encourage that presence. Logistically, we can go to Perryville and Aberdeen if we absolutely have to, and we have been doing since the banks closed, but it's more of a support for the local business community and residential community that they have a local bank presence so that they're not put out too much.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. DeHorty? Thank you very much, Mr. Horty, for explanation.
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna hand this back off to council to deliberate. I just wanted also to let council know that not only, obviously, is Hartford Bank local in our city of Havertagh Grace, but they also, in case you're wondering if they can handle the magnitude of our city finances, they also are Aberdeen, the city of Aberdeen's bank. So we will not be their first city account, so they do have experience working with cities. So we're very happy, we're very happy to move away from PNC and go to the local bank. So, okay, thank you very much, Mr. DeHorty. Council, further questions or comments on this resolution? Okay, council, I'm gonna call the roll. I'm gonna call the roll on Council Resolution 2021-03. Councilmember Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ringsoy.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative. Council Resolution 2021-03 concerning the purchasing card accounts for city operations is approved by council. Thank you very much, council. Item number thirteen, ordinances, this evening we have no ordinances. Item fourteen, business, we have no old business. Item fifteen, new business, we do have several items of new business. We have A through F, so sit tight. So we're gonna start off with some budget amendments for different areas of the city's budget, and I'm going to hand this over to Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Budget Amendment 2021-05, critical areas.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ringsoy. Questions or comments on the budget amendment? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the edification of the folks watching at home, this budget amendment deals with the special taxing district for critical areas and the need for some maintenance and upkeep on the living shoreline. So if you don't know or if you're not aware, there's a special taxing district for all the areas that are deemed critical areas in the city, which produce a pot of money, a fund for projects exactly in the character of what's being requested by the Department of Public Works here, so I think that this is appropriate.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson, for your explanation. Any other questions or comments by council? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2021-05 carries six zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, council. Hold on one second. Okay, we're good. We're gonna go to item number B, budget amendment.
You want to read it to the record?
Oh, that's what I was thinking of. I've just had this like brain pause for a second, like that's what I needed. Thanks, Council President. Councilmember Robertson, would you read the number, transfer numbers into the record?
Certainly. In the from column, account number zero-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-dash-four-nine-dash-zero-zero, funds, fund transfers, critical area, thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars. In the to column, account number zero-one-dash-one-two-five-one-dash-seven-zero-eight-four, critical area remediation, thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Mr. DeHorty has seemed to be correct to you. Thank you very much, Mr. Horty. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Proceed with item B, please. Budget Amendment 2021-06.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Budget Amendment 2021-06, legal fees.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is 2021-06 budget amendment regarding legal fees. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for the edification of the folks watching at home, this budget amendment deals with the legal fees that were incurred during the bond process when we went to the bond market a few months ago to get the fifteen million dollars for the water projects. This is not, to be confused with our own attorney's fees, this is the bond fees that, it's like a group of folks that go to a bond board, and the bond board has an attorney, and you have to pay that attorney's fees or our portion of that attorney's fees for the bond bill. So this is just us paying for the work that those folks did.
Councilmember Robertson, thank you very much for your explanation. Any other further questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2021-06 carries six zero and affirmative. Councilmember Robertson, would you like to read the transfer numbers into the record?
Sure. In the from column, account number zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-dash-four-nine-dash-two-seven, DHCD bond proceeds, one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred dollars. In the to column, account number zero-nine-dash-one-two-three-two-dash-six-zero-six-one, legal fees, bond issuance, one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred dollars.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Okay, we're gonna go to item C, Budget Amendment 2021-07 regarding Susquehanna Hose Company. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Budget Amendment 2021-07, Susquehanna Hose Company.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by the council president. This is for Budget Amendment 2021-07. Questions or comments on the budget resolution? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, for the edification of those watching. The Susquehanna Hose Company, for folks that don't know, is a volunteer organization, and the city supports them. There are other government bodies that support them as well, and they were in need of additional funding for some insurance costs, so this is basically helping them by providing reimbursement for the insurance costs for this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson, for your explanation. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2021-07 regarding Susquehanna Hose Company carries six zero and affirmative. Councilmember Robertson, would you like to present the transfer numbers?
Certainly. In the from column, account number zero-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-dash-four-one-dash-zero-one, real property taxes, thirty thousand five hundred dollars. In the to column, account number zero-one-dash-one-one-three-one-dash-six-five-zero-one, additional Susquehanna Hose Company contributions, thirty thousand five hundred dollars.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Well done, sir. We're gonna move to item D, a budget amendment, 2021-08, Havertagh Grace Green Team, and, oop, my apologies, one more time, Councilmember Robertson.
No worries.
Sorry, bud.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Budget Amendment 2021-08 for the Havertagh Grace Green Team.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Zinner. This is Budget Amendment 2021-08, Havertagh Grace Green Team. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to let everybody know, this is basically a zero-sum transfer. This is to help the, with the new contract that the Havertagh Grace Green Team is procuring for their compost and their food waste program. We're taking funds that we're basically saving from the trash collections and applying them so that they get this program and hopefully can grow it more and save us even more money. I'll let Councilmember Boyer talk a little bit about that with the Green Team.
Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you. This started off as a pilot program. You've heard me talk about it for the last couple of months. It has proved to be extremely successful. So successful that last week, all of the bins were filled a couple of days before it was to be picked up, and we had to go find another bin in order to fill it, so, in order for that to be filled. So it's definitely taken off. It's something that the community supports, and the Green Team would like to extend the contract for an additional six months. It was originally a six-month pilot program, proved highly successful, want to continue it for another six months, and the Green Team is looking forward to working with the administration to find ways to make this more sustainable for us in the long haul, because it is something that we would like to expand to other parts of the community and make it easier for people for the disposal of their food waste. So again, thank you very much, Havertagh Grace, for participating in this program. It's wonderful to live in a community that cares that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this budget transfer? Okay, here comes the vote for Budget Amendment 2021-08 regarding Havertagh Grace Green Team. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2021-8 carries six zero and the affirmative, and Councilmember Robertson, one more time, would you like to read those numbers into the record, please?
Certainly. In the from column, account number zero-one-dash-one-two-four-four-dash-six-one-two-five, contractual services, trash collection, seven hundred dollars. In the to column, account number zero-one-dash-two-three-three-two-dash-six-two-five-nine, Havertagh Grace Green Team, seven hundred dollars.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Everything good? All right. All right, with all the transfers are named, right? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. DeHorty. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson, Chair of the Finance Committee. Okay, excellent. We're gonna go to item E, Letter of Support from the Havertagh Grace City Council for House Bill 390 regarding University of Maryland Hartford Memorial Hospital Closure Economic Impact Study, and we're gonna hand this off to the council president for the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to introduce a letter of support from the Havertagh Grace City Council for House Bill 390 regarding the University of Maryland Hartford Memorial Hospital Closure and the Need for Economic Impact Study.
Second.
I have a motion by council president, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments? Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a huge hot-button item for the city of Havertagh Grace. This council gets numerous questions from time to time on the repurposing of the hospital, and therefore, I'd like to take this opportunity to read into the record the letter that's being submitted in support of House Bill 390. Madam Chair and the Honorable Members of the Health and Government Operations Committee, the Havertagh Grace City Council supports House Bill 390. If passed, the University of Maryland Institute for Government Service and Research will conduct a study to quantify the economic impact of the closure of Hartford Memorial Hospital will have on the city of Havertagh Grace and create a revitalization plan. In April of 2020, the Maryland Healthcare Commission voted to close Hartford Memorial Hospital in Havertagh Grace and open a freestanding medical facility in Aberdeen. Hartford Memorial Hospital is located at 501 South Union Avenue and sits on a 1.37 acre property in the heart of historic Havertagh Grace. As the city's top employer, Hartford Memorial Hospital not only provides the community with health care needs, it also serves as an economic generator. Inevitably, its closure will have an impact on small businesses, employment, and homeownership in Havertagh Grace. However, the extent of this impact is currently unknown. In addition to creating an economic impact study, the passage of this legislation would also mean the creation of a revitalization plan for the city of Havertagh Grace, consistent with the city's current comprehensive plan. This revitalization plan would serve the local government and the citizens as a roadmap for the best use of the property and how to plan for the future. As the city enters into a transition period between the current hospital closure and when the property enters the commercial real estate market, I believe an economic impact study and revitalization plan conducted by a third party is needed now more than ever. On behalf of the citizens of Havertagh Grace, we respectfully request the committee give House Bill 390 a favorable report. And in addition, the hearing, the initial hearing was held this day, and for anybody that wants to look and watch the hearing, you could go to the following link. HTTPS colon, two backslashes, www.youtube.com backslash watch question mark V equals capital F five, capital U, capital G dot dash, capital R, capital U, O V in lowercase, capitalized T Y, ampersand, feature equals Y O U T U dot B E. And you go in there, and what I would recommend is you go to about one hour and seven minutes, and that will start this portion of House Bill 390, that portion of the hearing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Council President, thank you very much for your comments. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Martin.
I'd like to take this time to thank both delegates, Lasante and Johnson, for putting this bill forward and championing the city of Havertagh Grace.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ringsoy.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask that that web URL be available online on the city website with attached to tonight's meeting minutes?
Yes. Chief Staff just indicated that wouldn't be a problem. We can do that.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Yeah, I did have the opportunity today to join several witnesses, Ms. Quisenberry, Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane Grimmer, Planning Director, Mr. Ed Grano, who is the Vice President of the Havertagh Grace Alliance, also a lifelong Realtor, spent most of his life in the realty business, and I actually testified too, so, anyway, I think it went good. too, so, anyway, I think that it went good, uh, obviously, uh, opposition, um, to it, I mean, you would think, why would there be opposition to economic revitalization plan when you pull out one of the biggest buildings of our, uh, city, but, you know, anything that slows down the, uh, the train, you know, nobody, nobody wants it to happen, so, I did recognize and, and make, indicate to the, to the committee today as a whole, that the city of Havertie Grace does not have the political pool that the hospital has with all their money and their connections throughout the county, and so, but, you know, we'll see, maybe, uh, maybe, um, delegates that, uh, can see this for what it is will, will, um, you know, make the right vote and, uh, move this out of committee and, and put it down for a general floor vote, uh, so, it's important, though, it's important because, as I made it clear to the delegation, uh, this hospital was founded over a hundred years ago by Havertie Gray citizens, um, and the citizens that started that hospital, the first hospital in Hartford County, never dreamed it would be anything else but, or, or ever go anywhere. And years and years later, many, many, many decades later, uh, University of Maryland came in, and they bought the hospital, or they took it over, and then they wanted to move it, and they'll profit, and then they refinanced the building to the hilt, they're gonna profit off of the land, the Maryland Healthcare Commission let them move, and in our eyes, the most fairest thing since the state's allowing this to happen from a state entity like the University of Maryland, in our eyes, the best thing to do would be to help us figure out the best use for that property, um, that would coincide with the direction the city's heading in, especially with our comprehensive plan. So that's how we view it, and I, uh, very grateful for the council taking up this letter of support, I hope everyone finds it in their, you know, conscious to support this letter because, you know, we have always been unified, uh, uh, moving forward with the hospital and our decisions, and so, like I said, Council President, thanks for reading that into the record, and we'll hope, uh, you know, our, our delegation, Delegate Johnson, Delegate Lasanti, who are sponsoring, we hope that they can move this through their, uh, committee and out onto the General Assembly, so, thank you very much, any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, my concern here is that we still have not heard from the, or to my knowledge, from the Cushman Wakefield study that was done, and is there any, um, support to have this and, and, um, force the, uh, Cushman Wakefield study to be presented so that, uh, the group that's, uh, determining the economic impact also has that information that was collected, and if there would be any bearing, if it would, um, push us to a better direction, or, uh, in other words, not keep one group in the dark continually?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that.
Go ahead, Catherine.
We got some PowerPoint slides late today, and I did get them out to council, um, you know, right before the meeting, um, and as I watched the hearing today, Chairman Pendergast did say that we needed the full-blown Cushman Wakefield study and that it needed to give, be given to the city leadership, and so, we'll see how that plays out, but, um, we did get PowerPoint slides, you know, very late today, um, probably right before five o'clock, so, um, so we'll, we'll see how it plays out, but, um, she did make a point that we needed a copy of that study, so.
Thanks, Council President, Councilmember Boyer?
Just to jump off of that, that study now is several years old, and a lot of things have changed in the past couple of years here in Havertie Grace, so while it's be, it would be great to have that study so that we have a perspective of the thought pattern and just the historical, the information they were using to start, there are things, having this economic impact study is very important because that, we can't use just the Wakefield, um, study, we need additional information in order to make smart decisions for our community.
Absolutely.
Yes. I'm at, I'm at the juncture now where the Cushman Wakefield study, just as Councilmember Boyer said, I'm talking about a study that's almost four years old, and, you know, a lot has changed, um, you know, you can argue a lot can change in a, in an economic, uh, you know, best use, that's a best use study, um, and, um, but the only problem with the Cushman Wakefield study is we actually never received, the city of Havertie Grace never received the actual full, full report. Uh, we saw several years ago some slide shows of it, interpretive slides, um, but, you know, I think it's just a red herring, to tell you the truth, I mean, I think, I think everyone's seen it, I mean, except for us, you know, I think that's almost, you know, it's the comical point, it's actually funny, every, because even, uh, Delegate Riley said today, "Oh, I saw the plan, looks wonderful for Havertie Grace," like, you've seen it? Well, we haven't seen it, so I'd almost think that Upper Chesapeake did it on purpose, at this point, we don't care anymore about the Cushman Wakefield study, we just want the General Assembly to authorize this economic, uh, impact study, because I said, I mean, they, the state did this to us, the state took over the hospital, uh, with the University of Maryland, and it's part of the state of Maryland, University of Maryland, they can always argue it's not, but it is, okay, and then the state, Healthcare Commission allowed them to close down, so you're talking about a hospital that the people built over a hundred years ago, and they're doing it, so this is not a private, and this is not a private business dealing with the government, it's not a local issue, this is a global issue of the state of Maryland, so, again, this is why we want this study to be done, because we want an outside study done, not a study done by a company that Upper Chesapeake's paying, that's why at this point, Cushman Wakefield study is, we don't, I mean, it's inconsequential, I just, but for some reason, Upper Chesapeake's told a lot of people, I don't know why they told, but they told a lot of people, they've given us a report, isn't that right, Council President?
Absolutely.
So everywhere you go, "Oh, I heard they gave you the report," I mean, but, well, no, we never received, I don't know why they say that, to be, let's dishonest, but, I mean, we, we have never gotten the reports, at this point, we don't want, I mean, it'd be nice to get it, but, we want that economic impact study, and we want the state of Maryland to help us with that, since this negative impact was created by the state of Maryland, and I'm hoping the General Assembly understands that and helps the city of Havertie Grace and our fifteen thousand citizens and the twenty-some-odd-thousand citizens around the area, you know, to figure out what to do with this, and as I told the delegation today, we're not a city of many buildings, we're a city of a building, and that a building was the hospital, the biggest building is the biggest centerpiece, and the businesses that go around that building and the zoning laws that are created over the decades were all based on that building being there, and so, all this was communicated to these delegates, and hopefully, they'll make the right decision, and, now, I've been in communication with Delegate Johnson after the meeting, and he told me, you know, he felt the, the hearing went well, and he received some questions from his fellow delegates, and, um, and he also has a couple more cracks at it, he said, you know, when it gets to subcommittee and stuff like that, so, hopefully, you know, our, our delegates at work down there in Annapolis will do the right thing, uh, for the city of Havertie Grace.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think last year, at the testimony, um, Lon Sheldon did state that he was gonna give us a copy of the Cushman Wakefield study, um, in near term, so, and we're, we're a year, year past, and we still didn't have it, so, um, you're right, it, it is outdated, and, but it, it kind of lays the framework as to, why didn't he give the city of Havertie Grace a copy of that study, and hopefully, um, that gives a favorable report in moving forward with the economic impact study for the city of Havertie Grace, because it's, it's needed, it's warranted, and it's just the right thing to do, so hopefully they make the right decisions.
Yeah, I, I do agree that it is an old study of four years, but, it took a lot of time, uh, for them to gather up about forty task groups to talk about what citizens wanted, what they saw as a possibility, and I think that that historical information, whether it's outdated or still has viability, would be valuable as a preface to whatever the, um, the, uh, University of Maryland Research Group, uh, could start with. My, um, only wish that, you know, they would, they would come forward with that information, and then, um, the group that would be doing the economic impact study could sort through that and, uh, evaluate the important point, points versus maybe something that's not possible, maybe something that would be, um, a good mix for the city, based on, uh, citizen feedback and what they would like to see.
Well, we certainly like to have it. Yeah, I mean, so.
Time will tell.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, you know, I mean, again, it's, it's, I appreciate that there are a handful of our county delegation, uh, in Annapolis right now, look, Delegate Lasanti and Delegate Johnson, who are, who are, you know, fighting for the city of Havertie Grace, you know, so, I always give credit where credit's due, and credit's due there, so let's hope that they come through and, uh, and, you know, again, that the General Assembly approves a spending measure to allow the study to go through, and the study will not be lost in some drawer, the study will, the study will be held in our hands and said, this is how this property should be repurposed, and this is how the property should be repurposed to fit the direction and the character of our city, you know, so there's, you know, a lot of good things, there's a lot of good things that could go there, and of course, there's some things that could go there that would be disastrous, so, that's what we're just trying to protect ourselves from.
Well, the other key takeaway is, uh, Delegate Lasanti and Delegate Johnson aren't the only two delegates down in Annapolis, and it's my hope that all the other delegates step up and go to bat for the city of Havertie Grace, um, in this House Bill, so, um, I'm actually awaiting to see how the vote goes.
Yeah, I hope they do too, that'd be good. Any other questions or comments before we call the vote on this letter of support? Counsel, I'm gonna do a roll call on this support letter. Councilmember Ringzacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Council President Glenn?
Yes.
A roll call vote of six for, six zero in the affirmative. Letter of Support from Havertie Gray City Council for House Bill three ninety regarding University of Maryland Hartford Memorial Hospital Closure Economic Impact Study is adopted and approved by this council. Counsel, we will have this letter finalized and ready for your signatures, uh, if you can stop by one day, uh, the next couple of days and sign it, we'll get it done, thank you very much. We're gonna go to item F, Special Events, Mr. Seipolt.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council, I have two events this evening for your consideration, the first is the Havertie Grace ICE Festival. This show is sponsored by the Havertie Grace Alliance, it is a two-day event located in downtown Havertie Grace. The Alliance wishes to begin setting up on Saturday, March the thirteenth, for most of the day, from about ten AM to three PM. Immediately following setup, the event would start on that Saturday from three, and run from three until eight PM. It would then resume on Sunday, March fourteenth, from twelve until four. Cleanup would occur immediately thereafter, and they anticipate having everything cleaned up and the streets reopened, which I'll get into street closing in just a moment, the streets reopened at six PM. In addition, um, they would like the upper portion of Washington Street at Congress Avenue through to St. John's Street, and including St. John's Street at Franklin, to be closed. Additionally, uh, they would like a portion of Pennington Avenue from Lodge Lane across through to St. John's, and from Franklin Street from Union to St. John's to be closed as well, so that would represent, uh, a similar to a First Friday type of event. They will have a beer garden incorporated into their event with proper permitting and staffing and perimeter controls as predicated by the Liquor Control Board. They also request, um, the, the street closures and the rerouting of traffic during this time and for vendor setup. EMS was, uh, will be present as well as the Susquehanna Hose Company, as they will have, um, vendor booths at this event. A COVID plan has been submitted and, uh, continues to stay under review and gets modified as, uh, as is warranted through this changing COVID environment that we're in. The public works expenses are three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, police expense is seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. They anticipate approximately five thousand, uh, attendees over the two-day outdoor event, there is no rain date. Yeah, maybe snow.
Is that all the details, Mr. Seipolt? I mean?
That's all I care to, yes, that's really it, I, I can go in a greater detail if you would like.
Saving the rest for questions, right? Okay, I got you, all right, thank you. Okay, Counsel, the ICE Festival for March thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, I have a motion to approve this event.
Approved.
I have a motion, I have a motion approved by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments on the event? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll post a nay. ICE Festival, March thirteenth to fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, three PM to eight PM on Saturday, twelve PM to four PM on Sunday, downtown Havertie Grace, is approved, six zero in the affirmative by council, thank you very much, Counsel, thank you, Mr. Seipolt, the next event?
Uh, the second event this evening is the Maryland Bass Night Nation Trail Fishing Tournament, sponsored by the Maryland Bass Nation. This is a one-day event, it occurs at, uh, well, it takes off and ends at Millard E. Tidings Memorial Park, it actually occurs throughout the Susquehanna River and Chesapeake Bay, where the fishing occurs, um, it would happen on Sunday, April the eleventh, and begin at six AM, the event would end at three. There is no expenses on this event from both, uh, DPW and the Police Department, there is no rain date, and they anticipate approximately sixty-five participants. A COVID plan will be submitted sixty days prior to the event and adjusted accordingly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seipolt, Counsel, I have a motion to approve the Maryland Bass Nation Trail Fishing Tournament.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ringzacher, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments on this event? Councilmember Ringzacher?
Mr. Mayor, um, I have notified, uh, the members of the Marina Commission about this event coming up, uh, it's good that we're starting to get, uh, into the boating season, April's sort of a timeframe where we don't get a lot of recreational boaters out there, so we can make use of the marina, and this is gonna bring a significant amount of income in for both the launching fees and for the businesses downtown, and, uh, I actually, uh, do commend them on a very robust COVID plan that they do have, uh, included in here, and I really look forward to it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringzacher. Councilmember Boyer?
Two questions, first, in the last Bass Tournament, they were going to announce people as they departed, that's not gonna occur at six o'clock in the morning, correct?
No, they usually don't do announcements for weigh-ins until the end of the tournament.
Okay, and?
Only the shotguns start, I'm only kidding about that.
And, um, the sixty-five, um, we have room within the, that down, the parking lot on the bottom for sixty-five boats, or is there a plan in place for other pla- other parking?
Well, I think in, in years past, they've parked in the swale as well as in the bottom, similar to where other, um, fishermen would park, any of our other boaters.
So there's enough for sixty-five?
Pardon me?
There's enough parking for sixty-five?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel, before I go for the vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll post a nay. Maryland Bass Nation Trail Fishing Tournament for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, six AM to three thirty PM at Tidings Memorial Park, is approved by Council, six zero in the affirmative. Okay, that does it for Special Events, and we're gonna move on to Director's Reports, and I'll start off with the Director Administration, Mr. Patrick Seipolt, good evening, sir.
Good evening again, Mayor and Counsel, and good evening, citizens, uh, not a whole lot to comment on, but I will have a couple of items, uh, first, congratulations to Officers Kill Savage and Matos, uh, welcome to Team Havertie Grace, um, looking forward to working with you. There will be an administrative meeting on January twentieth, um, which is tomorrow, beginning at four PM, um, you can visit the city website to access the agenda and for call-in information, we do have a link set up, um, primarily, the focus of most of the meeting will, um, contain itself about planning, uh, issues, uh, pain management clinics, streetscapes, and Havertie Grace Heritage Property discussions, uh, that'll be the primary focus of that meeting. And something I failed to do at the last meeting was to give a shout-out to the Susquehanna Hose Company for their help and support with the duck drop, and more importantly, the fireworks and getting the guys in off the barge. Also, our great neighbors Vulcan, um, they not only assist us with any request that we make of them, but they do it with such a zeal and a desire to, uh, to please us.
but they do it with such a zeal and a desire to, uh, to please us and, uh, really lend a hand. And so, uh, I, I just was remiss by not thanking them at the prior meeting, but it's never too late to give kudos where kudos is due. And then, uh, I also wanted to ask our citizens to please, uh, continue to monitor our website as well as other, uh, like the, the Health Department, uh, website as this vaccine, uh, continues to roll out, as we continue to go in through the various tiers. People become eligible for the vaccine. Don't delay, don't hesitate, call, get your appointment when the time comes. Um, help those who need help getting to their appointments if need be and making them aware. Uh, this, uh, the vaccine, the vaccination program only works if we participate. And, uh, finally, for a full listing of all your events, uh, going on, because they are beginning to percolate a little bit, spring is just around the corner. Uh, please visit our websites, explore havitygrace.com, HDG Opera House, and havitygrace.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Seipolt. Appreciate it. We're gonna go with Mr. Shane Grimm, our Director of Planning. Good evening, Mr. Grimm. What are you planning?
Lots of stuff, stuff everywhere. So, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Councilmembers. I just want to let you know this evening, uh, a reminder that we do have the Board of Appeals convening this Thursday to hear the case for a conditional use for a healthcare facility, which is an assisted living facility at 550 Revolution Street. That was the former, um, transitional housing, uh, facility. That was for veterans, I believe. That was approved a number of years ago, and now it will be an assisted living facility. So that's at 6:30 p.m. And if citizens would like to participate in that, they can, uh, contact me and get their comments ahead of time, or we can get them the link to the Zoom meeting, and they can participate. And it's been running very smoothly, so, uh, I'd like to give a shout-out to, um, Jeff Thompson and Adam Rupczynski for all that they do to keep that moving, and especially, I think I've said it before, but, uh, Mr. Packard and Mr. Ford, how, how well they've done with, uh, moving those, uh, meetings along and very seamless. So I'd like to thank them for that. And also, I'd be remiss, uh, wanna thank, uh, Chris Ritchie, Deputy Director of Administration, for all the work he's done with COVID and our COVID protocols in the city. But more importantly, uh, how diligently he worked over the weekend sending emails to all of us to make sure that, uh, we had all the information so that we could sign up for our, uh, vaccines. Uh, I'm glad to announce that I, I will be getting my first shot tomorrow. So, uh, he's been doing, uh, a lot of work as well as the rest of the administration, but just, uh, I don't think Chris gets enough credit for, for what he does for the city and how knowledgeable he is and, and all the expertise that he brings with him. So just thought that was important to, to note that. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grimm. Any questions for Mr. Grimm? Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome Ms. Erica Quisenberry Sturgill, Director of Economic Development. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll be brief this evening. Uh, the Havity Grace Economic Development Advisory Board will be meeting tomorrow. It'll be a virtual meeting. Uh, we meet at 4:00 p.m. It'll be available through the city's website for anyone who wants to log on, uh, to the YouTube channel to be able to see it. A number of us had the pleasure of dining in or picking up to-go orders from our newest restaurant in Havity Grace, Water Street Seafood at 654 Water Street. Uh, they are bringing steamed crabs back to Havity Grace as well as a pretty great range of fresh seafood with a magnificent water view. Uh, they opened just last week, and they're already up to over fifteen hundred followers. Uh, so they're doing pretty good at, uh, getting the word out that they've opened. Uh, since we are in the legislative session, there's a number of meetings relevant to economic development that are in the offing, including those of the Maryland Economic Development Association on January twenty-second, which we'll be participating in, Maryland Municipal League and Rural Maryland Council, as well as a few others, all of which have gone virtual this year, uh, and will be attending those. And lastly, work on the Battery Island Brewing Company at 101 North Washington Street is progressing at a pretty astounding clip. Uh, we have numerous facade and tenant fit-out grant applications that are into the state from our various businesses in the Main Street District. Uh, but we've been experiencing a very definite lag, uh, for review of these various, uh, State Department of Housing and Community Development Grants, um, because they're also dealing with EIDL and COVID grants and different programs that have come through as well, which have taken priority. So we are working in daily communications with our state representatives from DHCD uh, to try and stay front of mind and get those pushed along for our downtown businesses who are still trying to make improvements to their structures, uh, during this time. We're very proud of some of the work that they're doing. Any questions about our grant programs?
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. I'd like to call forward Mr. George DeHordy, our Director of Finance. Thank you, Mr. DeHordy. You're a busy man this evening. We appreciate you being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and, um, I'm working on trying to catch Mr. Ringsucker. Uh, the, first of all, I want to thank the council for their approval of all four budget amendments. It allows us to move forward without any delays or glitches and, uh, keep the city running. So I thank you for your support for everything that we're trying to do. Uh, the current, uh, financial condition, the general fund is sitting at just over $6.8 million and is running about 1.76 ahead of, uh, budget. Um, as has been reported, the beginning balance is sitting at just under 1.25 million ahead, which is the lion's share of that cause. Uh, add to that salaries and benefits, which are currently running about 670,000 below budget expectations through the, uh, and through the end of the calendar year. Our, our, uh, in addition, our real property taxes, we're running 138,700, um, ahead of what we expected through the Constant Yield Program. Um, we did spend a little of that tonight with one of the budget amendments, so that will go down a little bit. Um, on the flip side, the income tax continues to, uh, be at a lag as it is throughout the state. We're currently running at about 440,000 behind schedule. We do, we still do not yet know if this is timing or whether it is his actual job losses and the like. We won't know that for several months, but we continue to monitor that. The, uh, Water Sewer Fund is sitting at 1.8 million dollars and has a 1.5 million dollar increase for the year. The operating profit was, uh, over 1.65 million. Uh, capital fees added another 1.4 million to that, and capital projects and debt service payments uh, reduce it by 1.6 million dollars. I do note that next month, don't be alarmed when this drops dramatically, but the wastewater treatment plant debt service payment is due on the first of February, so it will be before the next council meeting. So those numbers anticipated to drop, and they will drop. Um, in terms of the marina, we're also at pretty much our high watermark because now most of the, uh, uh, slip fees for the upcoming boating season have been billed and collected. Uh, we're sitting at just, uh, uh, on, over 1.1 million, $35,000. A $211,000 increase so far year-to-date, and that will slowly wind down as we start, uh, having more expenses than we do revenue because most of the revenue now is in the door for the upcoming boating season. Uh, and that's the current situation, and what you can expect, um, that, that debt payment is 1.7 million dollars, just so y'all know the order of magnitude if I didn't already say that. So, um, but it's all running just, uh, just as we expected to. Uh, with that, I'll open the floor to any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeHordy. Counsel, do you have any questions for the Director of Finance? Okay. Mr. DeHordy, thank you very much for that report. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to call forward Mr. Tim Whitty, the Director of Public Works. Good evening, Mr. Whitty.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A little bit of an update here on some things. Gashes Creek, I know you saw the work out there on Gashes Creek. Uh, that, there's a two-phase, uh, to explain before. The goal is to replace the bridge. It's narrow, and it's the cul, the culvert's old. Uh, it's, it's, it's life expectancy's, it's towards the end there. So we have a two-phase project. The first phase was to relocate the water line that was unfortunately constructed under the culvert. So we've, we're in the process of doing that, and they've actually successfully, uh, directionally drilled and relocated the culvert outside the construction area for the, uh, for the bridge. Uh, they're tying it in. There's gonna be a shutdown probably next week. We'll have to coordinate with the folks. Uh, the goal here is to put, a temporary shutdown. We're gonna, uh, disconnect the valve, can put a valve in so that we can keep Oak Tree Drive residents, um, in water while we reconnect the, the new pipeline to the rest of the system. And then the next phase of that is to actually, I've actually submitted plans to Baltimore Gas Electric Company to have the gas line relocated. Uh, once that's done, uh, then we go ahead and proceed with bridge construction, probably in the, probably gonna be next year with that project. Uh, the 12-inch water main, uh, from Havity Grace to Aberdeen. Plans are complete. Uh, specifications, I did, uh, review the plans today. I got the plans. Gave a final check on the plans. Uh, specifications are ready to go. Uh, permits, and, uh, I'm gonna put together an RFP today or tomorrow, today, tomorrow. Uh, try to get something posted in the next week or so to get that project, uh, under construction. Uh, the Old Bay Lane Waterline Project is at ninety percent. I should have those pride plans for final review this week. As well as the, um, Green and Wilson Street Projects also are coming due this week. Turn those around. Again, the goal is to try to get all this stuff, uh, out for, for proposal, request for proposals for construction in the February timeframe. Gerard Street, uh, we did, there was an issue with the county as far as, uh, CBG money or funding for the, uh, for that flood prevention and drainage system. As I said before, the engineering plans are complete, and, um, we're gonna head with, uh, we applied for the money. There was an issue with, uh, this, uh, county. Uh, they had recently lost a person that did their, uh, environmental assessments. Uh, and they did have, they've hired a contractor, and so we're moving ahead with that project. Hopefully, in the next month or so, we'll have something back and start getting that project moving as well to correct the drainage issues behind the yards and between the radio station and, uh, pullet signs. Uh, the National Guard Pump Station, we did have a meeting. Patrick and I attended. Uh, we had some issues as far as trying to hold down costs on that project, and they're gonna go ahead and take some of our suggestions and apply those. On the, uh, We're Living Shoreline Project, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled for, uh, January twenty-seventh. Basically, we're having all the reviewers come together, EPA, Department of Environment, DNR, uh, the folks that, uh, oversee the wetland grasses. Get together, go over the, the plans, address comments, keep this and keep it moving forward. So it's gonna be a big, long meeting on the twenty-seventh at about 2:00 p.m. So we're gonna be sitting there for about two hours going over these plans. It's kinda like the new way of unfortunately doing things to get things done, uh, with the, with the COVID. So it, there are, I think, some challenges that really it's the SAVs are the big challenge here. Uh, we did have Morgan put together the survey, and hopefully she'll be able to attend the meeting. Uh, she has some personal issues she's trying to deal with, but, uh, so that's gonna be a big push here. Uh, the vast majority of the, of the, uh, folks are in favor of it. Like I say, there's some questions for Environmental Protection Agency, but the big thing is the SAVs and how we, you know, what do we do about, uh, what we're taking out and how we're gonna restore those, uh, the SAVs that we're removing when we construct the project. But it's, I think it's gonna come out very well. I'm very positive about the, uh, the impacts on that. Uh, the Francis Street Sewer, uh, we have those plans that are at fifty percent, and I have a meeting to go over, um, tomorrow with, uh, RK&amp;K. Uh, really, it is about, um, the, the construction for additional, um, there's some lengths of pipe that, there's like a six or seven hundred-foot length of pipe that, that we need another manhole where to put that and, uh, try to work in. There's some issues that we want to try to address. Again, Patrick's probably alluded to this on a number of occasions. Our construction costs are, these projects are coming out extremely high. I don't know whether it's to do with the COVID, whether it's, whether people are very busy. But, uh, we have to sort of, uh, kinda take, really take the time to really engineer these projects to hold down the construction costs, and that's what this meeting is about tomorrow is to, to, uh, to, to, to do what we need to do as far as design and, uh, and move path moving forward to kinda remove as many unknowns as we can about the project. You know, there's issues, uh, because we don't have any, the plans just aren't available for this project. It was kinda, I don't know how it was built, but we couldn't find any plans, and we're trying to remove the unknowns, give the contractors more information so we can get a better price on the project. Uh, Commerce Street is moving into final engineering as I talked before. And one of the things we've, uh, kind of, we had a money set aside, uh, for about 60,000 for fire hydrant replacement. There's a number of fire hydrants that they, we have throughout the city. Uh, the valves don't work on them, and they're, and they're so old that we can't find replacement parts. So we have about 60,000 dollars that we're setting aside for fire hydrant replacement. Uh, with the idea that we were gonna go internally and be able to do that, uh, with our crews. Unfortunately, with the water main breaks that we've been having, we're averaging a couple a week. Uh, and then services are, we're just having a lot of issues, uh, with the system. And they're just not even able to get to it, so we've, we've contracted that out. We're gonna have a contractor come in here and just start replacing those fire hydrants. And, um, finally, with the paving, BG&E, we got, I think, Stokes Franklin, uh, Warren Street, and portions of, uh, was there another, I can't remember the other street, but we're kinda been put that on hold with the temperatures. I think we're gonna, if we get a stretch of warmer weather in the next couple of months, we're gonna get back on, to get the, get the, you know, the pavement, uh, with the BG&E projects resurfacing, get that project finished. I know we've been getting calls from people. I guess it is kinda a rough riding over the trenches, and we've been getting a lot of calls from folks. When are you gonna get done? And, uh, it's just the temperatures and that, that, that plays a big role in, in, um, obviously with, with asphalt. If you, you put it down in bad conditions and it's just gonna come up and peel up. So we've gotta make sure we get our money's worth, temperatures are right, uh, for us to complete the projects. But we will, hopefully, within the next couple of months, when things, we get past February into March, we'll be able to get the paving started back up again and get those, those issues finished. Uh, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Boyer?
Just in relationship to, um, SAVs, um, when I worked at the Army Environmental Center at APG, um, APG is, has a, a large SAV program. Uh, have you reached out to them or do you need anything?
I guess, I, that's the first I've heard of it, so, yeah, we would like to, maybe we will take, talk to them. I would appreciate that information, contact information.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get that for you.
I'd appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Whitty? Mr. Whitty, thank you very much for the update on everything. We really appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
You betcha. I'd like to call forward the Chief of Police, Chief Walter. It's good to have you back, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually very good to be back. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's well wishes and everything like that, so, so thank you very much.
The captains did a really good job filling in, but they're, they weren't quite as charming, so.
Well, I don't know about that, but they're handsome fellows, so. Um, I do wanna thank you, Mayor, for swearing in our two new officers. Um, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to them. We do need them, uh, for sure, so, so I do appreciate you taking the time to swear them in. I did feel bad because, you know, of them not having a formal graduation ceremony, um, from their academy, and I know their academy also felt bad about it as well. But as I said, we are looking forward to March. I think they're gonna have it in a much bigger venue where there's, there's plenty of seating and, and social distancing, so, so that would be good for them, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, we're also very fortunate. Sergeant, uh, Pets, Dan Pets nominated one of his officers, Officer, uh, excuse me, Patrolman First Class Jay Cooper for the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund. Now, again, this is a national nomination, and, um, he nominated him because Corporal Cooper is an eighteen-year veteran with the Havity Grace Police Department. And in that time period, he has volunteered to work at the Harbor of Grace Enhanced Recovery Center, and this is a national wellness recovery center for first responders, both law enforcement, fire, EMS, uh, that type of thing. And, uh, uh, Jay, Jay Cooper, Jay is, um, in, on their support peer group, uh, which is really, really great. He also helps working with first responders who are having problems. Um, as, as, I'm gonna quote Sergeant Pets, he says, "As a volunteer, PFC Cooper advises and becomes a trusted ally for first responders that he doesn't even know in their darkest hours." And Corp, and, excuse me, I keep calling Corporal Cooper, um, but PFC Cooper has done a fantastic job, and he was recognized for, for helping peers, but he was also recognized for an incident that occurred in August. And, um, it was around the middle of August, he responded to a call for service where, um, a ten-year-old autistic child had left the house, had wandered out of the house in the middle of the... autistic child had left the house, had wandered out of the house in the middle of the night, and the parents didn't know that. When they discovered that he was missing, PFC Cooper was able to locate the young man. He had actually got, gotten on one of the boats that was off of one of the piers along the water. Jay was able to scale a fence, he was able to get on the boat, and then also the boy trusted him enough to, to come off of the boat. So that, that could have had very bad consequences, and Jay did a fabulous job with that. He really, really did. So the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund wanted to also recognize him not only for his commitment to his peers as first responders, but also his commitment to the community and citizens in the community. So while that was considered their November nomination, we actually weren't notified about it until January, but nonetheless, I, I thought it was something that really did deserve recognition. The other thing I wanted to mention is, this time of the year is always the, the annual polar bear plunge for Special Olympics Maryland, and this is actually their 25th anniversary, but after a lot of thought and a lot of lamenting, that's such a big fundraiser for Special Olympics, and there's so many people that Special Olympics Maryland didn't want, they didn't feel safe with the COVID-19, having it at Sandy Point State Park. So with that being said, they decided to come up with virtual plunging, so of course, Haverty Grace Police Department has a team, and we will be doing some virtual plunging. Our virtual plunging will actually be this Saturday at 10:00 AM. We have the assistance of, of the hose company, and I was watching the, the weather, and it looks like it's going to be chilly once again. So, and I do appreciate, the mayor also has, has signed up to, to do the virtual plunge, so I do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So the reason why I tell you this is that even though we're not actually dipping our toes into Sandy Point State Park, we will be getting wet, it will be live streamed, and again, the hose company is going to help us out with that, so I'm not sure if it's going to be hoses or what that's going to be, dunking boots, I'm not really sure until that morning how, how we're going to be plunging. But we do ask people, if they are so inclined, to, to go on our website, go to our page, our Haverty Grace Police Department, and, and make any donations. But even still, if you want to go to another, another police agencies or fire or whatever and donate to them, we would ask you to do that if, if you're so inclined to do that. So right now, that's going to be my report.
If we donate by check, who do we write the check to?
Special Olympics Maryland. And if you want to drop it off at the police station, we will make sure that, that they do receive that check.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, Chief, I'll see you Saturday morning.
Very good. Bring a towel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, sir. So I'll see you there too. Thank you.
You're welcome, Chief.
Couldn't we get the theme from Chips? Couldn't we get the theme from Chips?
Chips?
Yeah.
He's too young to remember that.
Yeah. Eric Estrada.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on to item 17, business from the mayor. Couple, couple items real quick. First, I want to talk about the passing of a former city council member and a person that many longtime Haverty Graceians knew of and many people knew well. And that was the passive of former council member Richard Tome. Council President, you going to have comments about him?
Well, I mean.
You normally have comments, I don't want to step on anything. Were you going to say anything about Richard Tome?
Just a little bit.
Okay, well, I just want to leave it at that, a lot of people knew him, knew that his heart was dedicated to Haverty Grace. I only knew him for a couple of years before he moved to Florida. He actually signed my petition for it to Masonic Lodge, actually, but, and he kind of got me involved in some things at Haverty Grace about 15, 16 years ago, and he is responsible for the duck drop. I confirmed that with the hose company, and they said it was his brainchild, so, you know, the impact that a man can have on a community, even though he hasn't lived here in a few years. But, you know, I just want to ask the council and, and my directors here, if you could join me in a momentary moment of silence for Councilmember Richard Tome. COVID numbers. So Hartford County's finally cracked a 10,000 case number since the COVID outbreak back in March. We're now, as of today, 10,396 cases in Hartford County. Haverty Grace, running total since last March is 674 cases. We're about 140 cases since beginning of the year. I know everybody's familiar with the numbers. I know it's the very common talking point with people. And I know a lot of people are getting vaccination shots already, and the vaccine's here. It's a matter of weeks, if not a month, before most people will get their vaccination shot, but I just want to warn people, we're not out of the woods yet. I just found out a good friend of mine, very good friend of mine, both his parents caught COVID about eight days ago, and they're both in the hospital currently right now, they got admitted tonight. They have pneumonia. So, you know, I, I pray for them, I pray they're okay, but, you know, you hate to hear something like this happen, so close to getting a vaccination shot, and so, you know, wear the mask, social distance, wash your hands, just be courteous of your actions around others, and we're, we're very close, you know, they're, I hate to say the old cliche, but there is light at the end of the tunnel, because I know a couple of friends of mine got their vaccination shots today. So just hang in there, everybody, and, you know, we'll get out of this, but just please be mindful that, you know, hey, look, the reality is this, even if we all get vaccinated, COVID's still going to be around for a while. It takes the time to eradicate a virus out of a population, so just be mindful, protect yourself, protect the ones you care about. So, let me make sure I got everything I want to talk about here. Oh, yes. Please go to the city website or the city social media Facebook page if you want any up-to-date information on vaccination. We're updating it up-to-date, current information as it comes out from the Hartford County Health Department. You can go, you can go to the city Haverty Grace website and find links for registering for the vaccine. Go to harfordcountyhealth.com directly if you wish, and like I say, every day it's getting updated with new information. So if you have any questions about registering for vaccinations, go to city webpage or go to Hartford County Health Department, and they'll give you all the updated information. So just a little commentary, you know, it's no secret, I'm, I'm a history guy, you know, so tomorrow's an inauguration of the 46th President of the United States, so, you know, and I teach American government, so this is kind of a big deal to me and my, my students right now, you know, and I told all the kids, you know, things to watch for, you know, the inauguration. Over the weekend, I had a birthday and turned 38, and just, what's so funny about that? Anyway, okay, so I had a birthday, and so my wife said.
You were never good at math.
My wife asked me, what do you want to do for your birthday? And I was like, you know, I was feeling kind of down. I'm like, you know, I always get real sad when I see my fellow Americans arguing and bickering so much about different things, and I said, you know, I, I really want to go and take the kids and go to Philadelphia. To me, that's like my spiritual place. I love being in Independence Hall and standing next to the Liberty Bell and Ben Franklin's grave and, you know, the Revolutionary War Museum and, and the DeGrasse House where Jefferson wrote the Declaration of Independence and go get a cheesesteak. Like, to me, that's like my favorite thing to do, is just walk around that area of Philadelphia and get like re-inspired. And so, you know, I'm, one of my favorite Americans is Ben Franklin. He was so smart and so witty, you know, as he called him, Dr. Franklin, and he was, has a distinction of being one of only two people who both signed the Declaration of Independence and U.S. Constitution, the other one being Roger Sherman from Connecticut. And so he was in the 1787 Constitutional Convention, and real famous story, it was actually used about a year ago from Congress, but a real famous story, I knew this story for many years. You know, they, they locked themselves up and nobody really knew what was going on inside Independence Hall during the Constitutional Convention, very secretive. But finally, when they finished the Constitution on September 17, 1787, and the, the story has it, Ben Franklin walked outside of Independence Hall, and one of the members, a man in a crowd yelled out and said, "Dr. Franklin, what do we have, a republic or a monarchy?" And he said, "A republic, if you can keep it." Now, when I first heard that quote years ago, when I read it in a book when I was young, I thought Franklin was being snarky, almost kind of being, you know, maybe we should have had a monarchy, but here's your republic, I don't think you're going to be able to keep it kind of deal. And so I kind of dismissed it. Maybe Franklin was a monarchy man, I don't know, he spent a lot of time in England. But the older I get, I realize what Franklin was saying. Franklin was a man of the world, he was very educated, and, you know, America's not the first time, the American Revolution isn't the first time that a country has risen up and overthrown the current situation of monarchy. History is loaded with examples of, you know, deposed kings, but Franklin knew that in most cases, when people scratch their heads, they always default back to the king because that's what they know, a monarchy. A lot less stress, a lot less trouble, just one person and that's it. So I guess now, you know, when you reflect about what Franklin said 231 years ago, "A republic if you can keep it," because he knew better than anybody, a republic takes work, takes a lot of work. It takes, most importantly, the willingness to compromise and to respect your neighbors. It takes compassion, and it takes the key ingredient of a love of liberty and respect for the people you live with. And I think now I understand what Franklin meant more about that quote. He wasn't being snarky when he said, "If you could keep it." I think he was taking his 78 years of knowledge at that moment and said to the man in the audience, "This is what I know to be true about human inclination. So good luck," he basically said. And I think sometimes when we get frustrated with our politicians, because we keep saying we want our politicians do the right things, maybe sometimes it's up to us to do the right thing. Instead of waiting for them to act, the people should act, because we're the ones that put them in office, and if we don't like what politicians do, we should always send them a message that we demand them to work together in the spirit of democracy and live up to Ben Franklin's words, "If you can keep it." So the 46th President of the United States is getting sworn in tomorrow, and as I told my students today in class, behold, the greatest thing you'll ever see every four years, other than the Olympics. You're going to see the peaceful transfer of power, and that's what makes us Americans. So I wish the 46th President of the United States all the luck, same way I wish the pilot of my airplane not to crash my plane. So when the pilot does good, we all do good. When the president does good, we all do good. So to the 46th President of the United States and, and the peaceful transfer of power. With that, those are my comments. I'd like to go to councilmembers, enter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and citizens at home. So I prepared some remarks because I have some pretty poignant comments I'd like to make. Much has passed since we last were here, a mere two weeks and one day ago. The year 2021 arrived with vengeance for me.
Okay. All right, thank you. So the year 2021 arrived with a vengeance for me and not with the hope I imagined for the new year. So here I sit grieving the loss of the pet who saw me through the 100 days my husband spent in rehab over the past year. With news early Friday morning, he was euthanized because it was deemed he could not be rehomed due to aggressive behavior, which started to exhibit in May. Then on Saturday, I found out about the death of one of my beloved SerOptimus sisters, Pat Keen, who I've known for 17 years and who sponsored me for that organization. So I want to offer my condolences to my fellow SerOptimus and Pat's family. Pat was remarkably positive, kind, full of energy into her 80s, and a friend to all she knew. We never hung up the phone without saying, "I love you." She worked tirelessly for the empowerment of young girls into successful women and was a forever presence in the annual art show. Then on Sunday, I found out my cousin's husband succumbed to COVID-19. He was diagnosed two days after Christmas and was in the hospital until his passing. A prelude to these sad events was the horrifying Capitol riot on June 6th, when last we met, January 6th was on my mind, and I was hoping there would be no violence and that any county counter protesters would stay away due to some of the violence that was displayed in December. I read about the groups who were applying for permits, not so much for who they were, but the numbers that were being projected. I thought that I was seeing numbers that appeared too low, considering the pre-publicity and the president's following, but took faith that the appropriate security would be in place. I believed that the Capitol would be heavily ringed with several levels of security. So while I feared there would be violence, I was not prepared for watching the breach of the Capitol in real time. My first hint of something wrong was while the speakers were challenging the Arizona vote, there was a banner on my screen saying the Capitol was on lockdown, but then it disappeared, so I thought maybe I was not reading correctly or that this was a communication, a precautionary communication step. Not a few minutes later, the breach was in full view along with the Confederate flag in the Capitol. The anger and some, the hateful behavior and looks on the faces of others involved was startling to me, and I was just beginning of the tears and heartache I would be experiencing before we even got to Day 15 of the New Year. In those faces and the shouts to kill our elected leaders through all sorts of means, I started to look back on my own life, asking, wondering, when did threats of killing become the de facto action of so many? How the choice to go to bed with so much hate and waking up the same way became so commonplace in the lives of these individuals? I question what this must be doing to their souls and psyches. I was raised Catholic and attended Catholic schools my entire education, though over the years I am no longer considered a practicing Catholic in traditional terms. I have with me, I'm going to try to get this, a photograph of my first grade class at St. James Grade School in Philadelphia. We were 45 strong in that class with four classmates of color. St. James was the parish for a West Philadelphia neighborhood that included the University of Pennsylvania. Possibly some of my classmates were children of professors or students there. I knew nothing of segregated schools, loved attending my school, and know that I did not see any differences among my classmates. Maybe at that young age and the kindness and faith of my first grade nun, I unconsciously formed my belief that none of us was different from each other. There is truth in that experience. I will always be grateful for that lesson learned so early in my formative years, since after moving to, to other schools, I would not encounter a black student classmate until my sophomore year in high school. I firmly believe that loving role models can stop learned biases and teach us to love each other with the true belief we are all created equal in God's eyes and in our democracy. This gives me hope for our future as a country with young minds that are being influenced to accept our multinational and multiracial population without prejudice and hate. In order for our nation to heal, we must condemn the actions of those who participated in this riot and the networks of support for those who wanted to attend but could not. Yesterday, we celebrated Martin Luther King's birthday, so I would like to close my comments with his words. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. As well as thank the, the incoming Biden administration for the show of compassion and acknowledging the 400,000 lives lost to COVID in the ceremony that was televised around 5:30 this evening. And tomorrow, we'll wake to a new government, a new president, and wish everything that's good for the United States going forward, and success for the new administration over the next four years.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmembers, enter. Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Zinner. I'd like to go to Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city staff, ladies and gentlemen here and at home. Just wanna give a, thank council for approving that budget amendment for Susquehanna Hose Company. I tell you what, you know, we all know that we've got some good folks in the city. But I got to watch them firsthand, you know, unfortunately. Last week, there was a fire in my neighborhood and, you know, I was thoroughly impressed with how quickly the hose companies showed up and got things under control and, you know, just conducted their business as professionals and like they've done this before. You know, you can tell that you've got some well-trained folks there, some high-quality equipment. And I'm just real thankful that they were there and able to respond as quickly as they did. A bad situation could have got much, much, much worse. So I also want to just remind folks to practice empathy when and wherever possible. It seems like that's what we're missing a lot in the world these days, you know? It's easy for us to get kinda siloed into our own thoughts and feelings sometimes and we forget about everybody else. But I think if we all just practiced a little bit of empathy, this world would be a lot better of a place. Mr. Mayor, that's all my comments.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. In Havertagh Grace, the water and sewer shut-off numbers have increased due to the financial impact of COVID-nineteen. Please, if you're having issues, contact the Havertagh Grace Finance Department to discuss payment options. We're up about, about four hundred cutoffs, which is a lot more than we've ever had in a long time. But also to help, Hartford County has funding available through the Residential COVID Water and Sewer Emergency Assistance Program under the CARES Act. The program provides financial assistance, water and sewer bills to the Hartford County residents who have experienced a financial loss due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. Anyone who has past due on their water and sewer bill or who needs financial assistance to help pay their bills in November or December should review the application program guidelines at www.harfordca.org. Applicants may be eligible to up to seven months of financial assistance. The funds are limited and can only be applied to water and sewer bills during the period starting March thirty-first. It was supposed to end December thirtieth, however, they're continuing it until their funds are exhausted. Past due bills prior to March first are not eligible for this funding. Funding is available on a first-come, first-served basis. Funding is dependent on availability of the CARES Act fund. The Hartford Community Action Agency will provide individuals and families an assessment and payment assistance. Payments are made directly to the water and sewer provider on the applicant's behalf. This information I just gave you is also on the Hartford, or the Havertagh Grace City website. So you can go there, please. If you're having problems, the city of Havertagh Grace is willing to help you and Hartford County has come up with some programs to help as well. A question was directed to me about riding of horses on the Joe K Trail. So I promised I would respond to that. There are currently no restrictions providing horseback riding on the Joe K Trail. I would suggest using good etiquette on the trail, offer the right-of-way to other riders, bikers, and hikers. If it's too difficult to move your horse off a narrow trail when meeting hikers, politely ask them to step off on the downhill side. It's left to make the horse nervous and then let them pass. Besides personal manners, practice good manure manners, too. And lastly, Angel Hill Cemetery, the American Legion, the Civil Air Patrol, this weekend did a cleanup of the wreaths across America, so I want to thank all the volunteers that came out. It started at nine o'clock and with all the hard efforts, they were done by ten. So in an hour, the eight hundred wreaths that were laid on the veterans' graves in honor of their service to this country and Christmas were cleaned up. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Martin. We're on go to Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council. I am actually quite surprised that Councilman Robertson did not mention that this weekend is the Robert Burns Weekend in Havertagh Grace. Friday and Saturday, we have events at the State Theater, greatly restricted due to COVID. But, and then Sunday is the Dinner at the Vandiver. I think it should probably be sold out by now. Very limited amount of tickets due to COVID, so go online, you find out about that. We will have some Scottish clothing pop-up shops downtown and might hear bagpipes. I, too, want to commend the Susquehanna Hose Company on fighting the fire. But also, we've had several boating accidents or boating issues lately. You know, we had boaters get stuck out on the flats. We had we had a kayak overturned this past week. And unknown, I guess, to the duck hunters who went out last week, I'd like to recommend to the people going to the Bass Tournament to avoid the six-inch-deep water on the south of the ramp because it doesn't get any deeper than that. They got rescued off the mud right there after making out about three hundred yards. And they got stuck out there. And this time of year, you know, Chesapeake's very unforgiving. It's cold out there and things can turn in a hurry, so please be careful, know your surroundings out there and boating. Practice proper boating safety. And with that, Youth Hunting Day is February sixth, so I do ask that if you have the ability to take a child hunting, take a kid out there, age sixteen and below, might cut off at sixteen, but, you know, take a kid to field and teach them the heritage of your sport. Would like to note that I will be up in Philadelphia on Thursday for a follow-up for my daughter's surgery, recent surgery in September, at Shriners Hospital for Children, which is the greatest philanthropy in the world. Free medical care, top-notch, best surgeons in the world. Really world-renowned surgeons, cutting-edge technology. And I couldn't be happier to be receiving treatment for my daughter there. So we're gonna follow up her knee surgery she just had in September and find out when they're gonna take the plates out of her knees. So do ask everybody to pray for that. And I'd like to offer prayers to my Warrior Football family. One of my players, his father passed away last week. So yesterday, I was able to gather, you know, a small group of the kids and we all went to his house to show support and give some gift cards for local establishments around here and just show them that he's loved and, you know, Andrew, we're all here for you, buddy. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringsager. Good evening, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone tonight who has volunteered to serve our community, either as a member of one of our committees or as a sworn police officer. We need everybody contributing and stepping up to the call, and I really appreciate people who have done that. On behalf of the Green Team, I want to thank everyone here for your votes to support the composting program. If you're not already doing it, if you have any questions about it, please reach out to the Green Team. They have a great website and lots of other programming available on their website. And finally, I want to thank you all for your well wishes. Our mom, she's doing a lot better. That was the reason why I was not here at the last meeting. She's doing great after her surgery. While she can now move her neck perfectly fine, she's still complaining like she usually does, so she's wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. We're on go now to business from the council president. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'll try to keep it a little short and sweet. First off, I want to congratulate Jimmy Clark from joining the team. My question to Dave Martin, is he gonna bring his referee whistle? Keep control. My thoughts and prayers go out to the families of both Mike Miller and Richard Tome. As many are aware, Mike Miller was a true statesman and served approximately four decades as a Maryland state senator and tremendous loss down in Annapolis. Richard Tome, on the other hand, served with this dais approximately twenty years ago. As the mayor stated, he championed the duck drop. I mean, I know the Susquehanna Hose Company is actively involved in the duck drop, but it was his idea from day one. And another thing that Richard was known for as he served with this dais, every penny he made serving as a city councilman, he donated back to this community. And I know I, the kids got excited because I would take him down to the Country Flower Shop where he was, where he owned, and they were amazed at the train gardens, that Richard, Richard had a love for trains. And they, we said, "Dad, take me down to the train garden." I sent out my deepest sympathies to both families. They both are gonna be sorely missed, but trust me, they won't be forgotten. And last but not least, I, too, want to send out my thanks to Susquehanna Hose Company. Beginning of this year has been very challenging for them. They've had numerous working fires. I mean, it's amazing the number of working fires they had, and they've had water rescues. And like you said, for the duck hunters, they had to be rescued with a helicopter. And to watch that on the internet was amazing, to watch how they got them out of the water. And just, it reinforces to each and every one of us that when we need them, they're always there. Their response, like Jason said, was amazing. And that's, that's not only for that incident, it's for every incident. They get out, they're one of the fastest fire companies, I think, around. And, you know, I just am so thankful they're part of this community. So for all the Susquehanna Hose Company volunteers, thank you for your tireless dedication. Thank you for your selfless service. And thank you for all you do. And for the, all the new line officers for 2021, we wish you nothing but the best. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much for your comments, Council President. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number nineteen this evening, which is comments from citizens. This is the part of this evening's agenda that we are, any citizen wishes to talk about city business, that is not on this evening's agenda, then we, we hear it. So I will refer to Mr. Seipolt. Have we received any citizen comments since the last city council meeting that they wish to be read to the public?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay, fair enough. So we will move on to item twenty, which is adjournment. Council out of motion to adjourn.
Still move?
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Martin. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn, city council meeting carries six zero, affirmative. The time is nine oh three. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a good evening. Stay safe.